Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the Tuesday, June 1st, 2021 Town Council meeting to order, which this is our annual town meeting. If everybody could please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I ask that you all remain standing so that we may have a moment of silence for all our men and women serving overseas. Thank you. And I'd just like to say we're going to, this year's annual town meeting, I'm going to dedicate it in memory of Nelson Chin, who was our Director of Parks and Recreation. Nelson would have always been here as a director and always had a good time at this meeting and enjoyed the party afterwards. So we are thinking of Nelson tonight, he's a very dear friend of mine, but wanted to dedicate that to him. Clerk Semino, roll call, please.
Counsel Hume?
Here.
Counsel Ringus?
Here.
Counsel Ryan?
Here.
Counsel Flaherty?
Here.
Counsel Sasha?
Here.
Counsel Connors?
Here.
He's here via Zoom. Counsel Barica?
Here.
Counsel Mackin?
Here.
All present.
Thank you, Clerk Semino. So we are here, this is our second meeting, that we are live in person. It's good to see so many of you here in attendance. We are also, B-Cam is streaming on their channel, on the YouTube channel via B-Cam. We are on Zoom, as of right now, all audio is working. If it is not, for those watching at home, go over to the YouTube channel. If our audio is not working, listen on the YouTube channel. We will open up the chat on the Zoom feature during the public hearings only. We do have a couple of public hearings tonight, so anybody here in attendance, as well as at home, will be able to engage in those public hearings. So moving on to announcements, I just want to thank Mayor Kokoros and our Veterans Agent for the incredible Memorial Day ceremony here. Unfortunately, it was held inside because the weather was not permitting it to be outside, but it was one of the first, I think, Mayor Kokoros' events that the Town of Braintree held where everybody could gather. I think it's appropriate that it was Memorial Day to remember all those who served our country, so we could all be here tonight and do what we do and have the liberties and freedom that we can celebrate and, you know, appreciate on a daily basis. So I just want to thank Mayor Kokoros and the entire, everybody who had a part in that, all the veterans who came, and the various veterans organizations. It was a great event. It was highly attended, right here in the chambers. So thank you to all who could be here. Many of the councilors were here, and it was great to see everybody out in public and express our gratitude and recognize and remember those fallen heroes. Also, I just want to say congratulations to all the BHS seniors. Their last day was last Friday. Tomorrow is senior prom. Thank you to all the Braintree School administrators who made prom happen. I do have a senior, my youngest, so it'll be my last student going through the Braintree Public Schools. And Saturday is graduation day, so congratulations, good luck to all. Congratulations to all the parents who made it, and their kids will be graduating. Wish them all the best. Any other announcements from any other counselor? Counsel Ryan?
Thank you, President. Hume, I just wanted to add, I thought it was wonderful being here for the Memorial Day celebration on Sunday. It was nice to be back with folks in person and, you know, say hello to people that we really haven't seen in a long time. I want to thank Mayor Kokoros for the event. It was very nice. And, you know, also Stephen Lynch, our U.S. Congressman, was also in attendance, and he did a great, great job talking about, you know, bringing people home, back to the forgotten and the lost on the battlefield. And he did a great job talking about that. And what I really wanted to mention, though, was Al Verraso and the talk that he did on his brother, Bill Verraso. And Bill was Al's brother, and he just, he did a great job, and it was very moving and touching, what he, when he spoke about his brother. So I just want to say, well done, Al, and I thought it was wonderful, and it was, it really gave a lot of meaning to Memorial Day, seeing Al talk about his brother and remember his brother, and Bill's, four of Bill's children were there, so it was just a wonderful event. And thank you, Mayor Kokoros, for having that event. Thank you very much.
Recording in progress.
That's for Zoom, for those of you who hear that. Okay, any other announcements from a counselor? Seeing none. Moving on to approval of minutes, March 16th, 2021. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Still moved, Madam President. Second.
There's been a motion made by Counsel Ringus, seconded by Counsel Ryan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Moving on to communications and reports from the mayor and town boards. 01220, Council President, the COVID-19 update. We do have with us tonight Mary Beth. Hold on, we're just dealing with some audio. Mary Beth McGrath, Director of Municipal Licenses and Inspections, is here with us.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, President, Council President, and the council members for allowing me to appear before you again this evening. I'm happy to do so for as long as you would like me to continue. As you may be aware, effective on Saturday, the 29th of May, all of the industry sector specific requirements for establishments and the like were rescinded by the governor. The emergency order will be lifted as of June 15th. There are still some sector-specific requirements for things like schools, nursing homes, and transportation and medical facilities regarding face coverings, but other than that, the majority of the sector-specific requirements have been lifted. If you've been following our updates on a daily basis, you can see that the COVID cases have dramatically been reduced over this last month and a half to two months, which we're grateful for. Since my last visit with you on the 19th, we have had 20 cases, which, from the 19th to present, that's done good results that we're very pleased with. Today, we had zero cases, and our total cumulative number of COVID-19 cases since it started in February of 2020 is 4,614 cases and 136 deaths. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council members may have.
I don't have any questions, but I just want to say thank you. I know I say that every meeting, but this has definitely been a long, long haul, and I appreciate you being at every single council meeting since we entered into this pandemic, and I'm glad to see us, we are all here. I think it's so appropriate at our annual town meeting that we can all be here together and in person. So thank you for you and for your teams and staff and all that they have done to help everybody get through this. Anybody have any questions or comments for Director McGrath?
No.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to item 01221, Council President Peterson pulled update from Mayor Kokoros. Any update this evening? Mayor Kokoros?
Good evening. Thank you, Council President, councilors. At this point, there's no new updates. We are still waiting on a number of items. The site work continues, but as of June 15th, if the items are not delivered, we will have to move on from this particular contractor. So that's where we are right now, and we'll let you know when we get to June 15th.
Great.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to old business. Item 21020, Mayor, FY 2022 operating budget or take up any action relative thereto. This is a public hearing. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Still moved, Madam President.
There's been a motion made by Counsel Ringus, seconded by Counsel Ryan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that is unanimous. Thank you. Before I refer this over to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means, Counsel Barica, I just want to recognize all the Town of Braintree employees and department heads who are here with us this evening. We do have Mayor Kokoros, as we just heard from, Nicole Tav, who at Taub is the Chief of Staff and Director of Operations, our DPW Director, Jim Arsenal, our Police Chief, Mark Dubois, Fire Chief, Jim O'Brien, Director of Municipal Licenses and Inspections, Mary Beth McGrath from the mayor's office, we have Kate Naughton, and I believe Steve Leary, right on cue. Steve Leary from the mayor's office, our Golf Superintendent, Darren Brown, HR Director, Karen Shanley, Ed Spelman, Director of Municipal, oh my gosh, Ed, I'm totally blanking on it. Municipal Finance, thank you. Terry Stano, our Library Director, John Thompson from DPW, Shamela Bizwas, our Elder Affairs Director, Ann Toland from the Library and Marge Crispin Center, and many other things. And we have Tata Maxwell, Jada Maxwell, sorry, Ben Hulk from DPW, Jeff Coons from Friends of Library, as well as DPW and our Recycling Program, Melissa Santucci Rossi from Planning, Lou Dutton from DPW, Chris Griffin from Parks and Recreation, Bob Brinkman from our Assessor's Office, Mike McGurty from the Building and Licenses and Inspections. We also have with us tonight our, the Counselors' Internal Auditor, Sean McGoldrick, and from our School Department over here, we have Director Doctor, excuse me, Frank Hackett, who, this is Dr. Frank Hackett's last annual meeting, our last budget, because I don't know if everybody knows, but Dr. Frank Hackett is moving on to bigger and better things, although I do think Braintree is the biggest and the best. But I do wish you all the best. It's been great to work with you and glad you're here tonight. We also have our Assistant Superintendent, Jim Lee, with us, Ed Cronin from the Business Office of the Schools, a couple of members of the School Committee, Chairman Devon, CRO Chaff, Kelly Cobb-Lamir, and Jim Casey, our Town Clerk, is here. I believe I caught everybody. So thank you all for being here with us tonight. This year, to say has had its challenges is an understatement, both for everybody, whether it be with your own family, friends, all of our councilors here with family and our jobs. It's been a struggle for many people, and I just want to take the time to recognize that I think the Town of Braintree always steps up in good times and in bads, and especially in bad times, and I think this last year is, everybody stepped up more than ever when your neighbor or a friend or somebody you didn't know needed help or couldn't go out because they were in quarantine. I heard so many stories of people helping out, whether it was be food, you know, food or helping out with a loved one, or what, the list goes on and on. It's truly, it is remarkable. It was a difficult year for everybody, but I'm sure you all can have many stories that you've heard of people stepping up and doing what they could to help a neighbor, and I think that's the Braintree way. And I know Mayor Kokoros led the charge on that in starting the food drive where people couldn't get out and go to the store, and Mary Beth McGrath, her office, and Ann Toland, as I mentioned, the Marge Crispin Center. I mean, there was so many people who stepped up and helped out in so many ways, whether it be financially, health-related, food, getting rides, anything like that. So I just want to say thank you to everybody, all of you here in attendance, all of you listening at home, all the councilors. This was no easy task this past year, and the budget especially. So many of you at home, whether you were laid off or furloughed or didn't have jobs, like, we feel that pain too, because the town has our own struggles. You at home have to, you know, manage your household budget with the income that you have, and we as the town do too, and I think we always provide the best services possible and it, most out of our money, we always have. And I think this year is truly an exemplary year of that, that we're still, there's not many, if any, services that are being cut. Yeah, there are cuts to this budget, but it's just because of the sign of the times and that revenues are down, and, you know, the town is no different than a household where we depend on our income as a town to pay for the things that we need, and if we don't have that income, we can't get those services. So I appreciate all the department heads. I know some of you were short-staffed this past year, and that was no easy task, and the burdens, you know, I think everybody stepped up, and I just, I don't think we can say it enough is to say thank you and extend that to your staff, the appreciation and all the hard work. It doesn't go unnoticed. We might not see you every day, we might not get to talk to all of you every day, but I truly am grateful for all the work that the departments, and I'm so proud to live in Braintree and be serving on the council and be the president. So on behalf of all of us, I think I can speak for all of us, we thank all of you, department heads, Town of Braintree employees, staff, teachers, residents, for coming together and sticking through and getting through this past year, and here we are today. So without further ado, I am going to turn it over to Counsel Barica, who is the Chairwoman of Ways and Means, for her recommendation on the mayor's budget to the full council. Counsel Barica.
Thank you, President Hume. First, I want to thank my colleagues on the Ways and Means Committee for their incredible diligence and efforts as we investigated every line of the town budget, and I'm sure they will be able to provide some additional insight into the nine nights of hearings held during the month of May. I also want to thank our Town Auditor, Sean McGoldrick, and his associate, Catherine Pomeroy, for their accessibility, for answering all our questions, providing sound information and offering their expert opinions. And of course, I want to acknowledge and thank our Clerk of the Council, Sue Semino, Chief of Staff Taub, and Finance Director, Ed Spelman, who joined us every single night. So thank you all for being, being there for help, for us and for helping us with this budget. So for residents here tonight and watching at home, know that over the month of May, over more than 20 hours, hearing from parents and teachers, the committee reviewed every item in every department, always with our kids and the school department's budget in mind. Over the course of the hearings, it became clear that there is just not a lot of wiggle room in this budget. This year, we have 1.6% more money to spend than we had last year, and that's not a lot of money. When we know the cost of living is rising at a faster pace than that, the town's contractual obligations alone increased by 2%. In short, our expenses are rising faster than our income, which is why the mayor's budget presents cuts. And I want to take a few minutes to explain how the Ways and Means Committee reached a unanimous favorable recommendation for this budget. During our investigations, we realized that most of the town's budget, 87%, fulfills contractual obligations. That spending we really cannot touch. That's things like salaries, benefits, insurance, debt obligations, state assessments, and election and census services. And make no mistake, these are critical expenses. Our people and our investments are what make the town run. More than half of what's left after our contractual obligations goes to the schools. So what's left after that is a very small amount of money to pay for all the other things we need to make our town run, things like firefighting equipment, the library, building inspections, and recreation programs. Once we realized there just wasn't really any extra money, the committee approached the budget cuts from another angle. What about using our rainy day fund, as we have in past years, to make ends meet, so we wouldn't have to make cuts to services? Unfortunately, our reserves have dwindled to less than $4 million, significantly below the Massachusetts Department of Revenue's recommended amounts. Drawing on these reserves to bridge funding gaps is just not an option. We do not have enough money in the rainy day funds to help us weather this storm. That leaves us with the last option for preserving services this year, transferring funds, which is solely the purview of the mayor. Only the mayor can reallocate funding, and it should be noted, he did just that, moving money from an investment account to the School Department to restore math specialists and supplement other areas of the school budget. But restoring funding to one department creates a cut in another, and with department budgets being so lean, there's really not much more fat to trim. So to summarize, our expenses are greater than our income, and by law, we can't spend money we don't have. Our rainy day funds are insufficient to supplement our budget. That leaves us with transferring funding. If we feel one department requires more funding, we are necessarily cutting from another. And with our legally obligated expenses comprising 87% of the town's budget, there's just not a whole lot of money to move around. So what choices are we left with? In the short term, we are going to have to accept that cuts must be made, and believe me, as a resident, as a parent, and certainly as a counselor, this isn't the message that any one of us wants to deliver. We have listened to residents' concerns, and we were all working towards the same goal, to preserve as many jobs as possible and protect our school budget. I believe this budget was created in good faith, and I know it was reviewed exhaustively in good faith to do just that, preserve jobs in our school budget. After scrutiny, inquiry, and investigation, the Committee of Ways and Means felt the final budget presented the best decision we can make with the information we know today and the resources we have. Thank you, President Hume.
Thank you, Counsel Barica. Anybody from the mayor's office wish to speak on the budget? Mayor Kokoros? Sue?
Thank you, Madam President, town councilors. Thank you, Chairwoman Barica, and your committee for all of your hard work, and thank you for the unanimous vote in favor of my '22 budget. And I come before you tonight to ask the entire council for a favorable vote on my '22 budget. It's really interesting, because a year ago, I was sitting behind a computer screen. We all were sitting behind a computer screen, and now we are here, maskless and in person. So in addition to that, the day after the budget, I found out that I was positive for COVID. So this is, it's really, it's really a thrill to be here tonight, to be able to speak to you in person. The fact that we are going to have a parade and a Braintree Day celebration, a prom, a graduation ceremony for our students, those are all great things, and I couldn't be happier to stand before you today and announce that. I appreciate Council President thanking all my staff. I concur and tell you that without their help and their hard work, things just wouldn't get done, it wouldn't happen, and they make me look good, and you guys look good every day, and I say thank you to all of you for all the hard work that you do. In addition to that, I just want to talk a little bit about the vaccine and how, you know, our Health Director and Municipal License Director, Ms. McGrath, and all of my staff and so many others from Elder Affairs and all over, Human Resources, so many people that came to this room on Saturdays and made sure that vaccinations were given out to our eldest and most vulnerable citizens, our public school nurses, there's just so many people that were involved to make this happen, and I once again say thank you to all of the staff that helped us with that, and thanks to the residents for their patience, and I'm so pleased at the amount of vaccinations that we were able to do prior to the shift. So thank you to my staff once again. Couldn't do this job without you, and I appreciate all the hard work that you put into this Today, I come to you with optimism and continued success of the great Town of Braintree. Throughout the past 15 months, I have witnessed strength of our community. Residents of our incredible town have shown resilience, generosity, and kindness towards one another. We have made it through the darkest of times, and out of that darkness breeds renewed success. The pandemic had a severe financial effect on our business, community, as well as our residents and our town's revenue. But more importantly, it affected so many families through the tragic loss of 136 lives in our community, and that's something that we will all carry with us forever. Back on March 12th, 2020, we began to make adjustments to the budget. We knew that with the shutdown of government, the shutdown of businesses, and keeping residents from coming together, as we said, "coming together by staying apart" was our byline, we knew that we were going to have to make adjustments, and we did. So we partially laid off 60 employees, we closed town buildings to the public, made sure that we maintained those services to the public, we limited summer programming, came up with new ideas. Our favorite guy, who ran all the summer programs, Nelson Chin, came up with some new ideas, and we implemented them, outdoor drive-ins and things of that nature, and implemented a hiring freeze and left many positions vacant, knowing that we would have the financial difficulty in filling them, but still provided the best level of service to our residents. So we face many challenges, we faced and do face many challenges, and we have two consecutive years of level funding on the state level, which I think it was a difference of maybe $50,000, but, you know, that's something that, you know, we are working through. We're hoping next year, those numbers will get better. And also, we've had to work through significant reduced local revenue, as you all know, meals tax, motel tax. We have been hit with many difficulties, and what we do is, we stand up to them and we come up with ways of cutting costs and saving, and that's really been our, our job since I got in office. In addition, as for this budget and future budgets, you know, we do have Rescue Act funding. It's not as grand as maybe some other communities, but it's because of our success. Our success has made us so self-sufficient that the federal government doesn't think we need as much as some other communities. We're still working on the $7.1 million through the county, been working with Counsel Ryan on that. We do have the $1.8 that you see in this particular budget, and that will be available in the following year's budget. And as I speak to you, we continue to work with the governor's office to try to get additional funding that is available through the state, through the governor's office, from the Recovery Act, and we will be having that conversation, I believe, later this week. Lieutenant Governor put together a meeting. So I think that even with the Recovery Act money, even with the ability to help us through these difficult, challenging times, the key is new revenue. And new revenue comes in commercial redevelopment. And what we have going on right now is, the Hyatt has reopened, and shortly we'll be having a little event there. We also have the Liberty and Grove rezone, which will be a redevelopment as well. We have the Lord &amp; Taylor property, which is in the process of attaining a new clientele, new folks to lease that site, and it's 125,000 square feet of space. I've been directly involved in writing letters to try to bring tenants into that particular location. It looks very promising. You all must know about the Hamannetic site. I think I've spoken to many of you about the life science industry. The life science industry, very interested in that building. They're investing $6 million right now into that building in order to have it ready for the life science company that's lucky enough to come to Braintree. So we will continue to update you on that. We have been successful in selling the Allen Street property. And we have future development that's going to go on there, as well as our first 55-plus development that was approved on Hancock Street. And these particular developments are going to add to our housing stock for affordability, which will get us closer to our 10%. I have set up a committee within my staff to really work with life science, to try to bring life science into our community. And we have many different locations that we're looking at right now. And this is really the future of our town. And we will continue to pursue those life science businesses, which bring great tax revenue as well as great jobs. Well, as you, as you have reviewed this budget, you will see that we still have maintained the highest level of services for our residents. Our school department remains one of the best in the state. And we continue to provide the greatest education for our children in our community. And I'd just like to thank the members of the school committee here and Chairman Devon for their hard work, as well as Dr. Hackett, Ed Cronin, Lisa Freely, and Dr. Lee. It has been a very thorough process in which, as a team, the school committee and the school department has put together a budget that prioritizes the great programs that we offer to our students and maintain the highest level of education. So I thank them, and you will see the strength in our school system in this budget. As well as, as you go through the remainder of the budget, you look at police, fire, DPW, and all of our departments, we have funded our departments so that we provide the greatest services to our community. I think that although we have been challenged, unprecedented times, I think as a team, myself, my office, my staff, and the council have worked diligently together to not only create this budget and last year's budget, but to move forward through a time that no one could have ever predicted would happen in their lifetime. But it's through that great relationship that we have and that team effort in working back and forth and, you know, understanding that we're not always going to agree on everything, but we find compromise. And I think, you know, that's what makes this town such a great town, to be mayor of, to be a counselor in, and to be a resident of. So, once again, I ask you to support my 2022 budget. And I appreciate our partnership and look forward to that partnership throughout the entire budget season. And thank you for all of the hard work that you have done to get us to this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayaka Coros. For those at home, we are having issues with the Zoom. So Clerk Samino has put in the chat the link to our YouTube channel. If you are on the YouTube channel, you can text a question to Clerk Samino, and we will read it into the record. That number is 339-987-2726. Again, if you have a question during the public hearing on the budget now or later on in the evening, we have a couple of public hearings. The number to text if you cannot get into the Zoom and are watching via the YouTube channel, text 339-987-2726. I do see there is a question in the Zoom. We will get to that. I, I will answer that, or read it rather, in a moment. But I just want to, if any counselor has a question first, if you want to go to the public. Counselor Macken, go ahead.
Madam President. And, you know, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thank you all, your department heads for being there, for being here tonight. I am going to support this budget. You know, I know how much work went into it by the mayor's staff, the Ways and Means Committee. I don't envy them this year. And all of you, I know this was a tough year. But I do, you know, I do want to point something out. I don't, you know, this is a tough year, but I think it's, I don't think it's a result of just COVID. I think this is a result of years of overspending and kicking the can down the road. And COVID brought that to light. But this is a position we were going to be in within the next few years. You know, I did vote no on the budget last year because there were several glaring issues that jumped out to me, you know, heading into a recession. You know, we had no idea how much our revenues were going to go down. They did go down more than expected. I know we were, we were really hoping to get state money, but a bailout's not a plan. I didn't think that's something we should count on. And we did not get anywhere near what we wanted. And lastly, you know, we really took a very significant amount of our free cash to plug the budget. And some of it was as projected revenues, not all of which came through. And that's not the first year we did that. We did that the year before, and we did that the year before. So, and that was independent of COVID. And as Madam President said, you know, you should treat the budget think of as a household budget. And in your household, if you were spending too much, you wouldn't take your savings to continue that spending year after year. You would address it. So I do hope this could be a lesson learned for us. You know, this is a tough year, and I, I like what Mayaka Coros said about life sciences, and I do hope, you know, things bounce back for us. But, you know, as we go forward, let's just kind of remember what happened here. You know, there's a reason we have no savings now. And it didn't just happen last year. So that's it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Before I go to the public, I will come back to the council after the public. Okay. I'll come back to the council. If you want to speak now, you can speak now. Go ahead. Counsel Connors.
I don't want to go out of order.
Nope.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I just, I also want to reiterate, you know, I'm on the Ways and Means Committee, and we have scrubbed this budget inside and out. And really, there is no money in this budget. One of the major concerns we brought up is that we cannot wait until next year to figure out a long-term resolution to this budget. It's not going to work. You cannot hit the Ways and Means Committee up three weeks or two weeks prior to a budget season and think that it's going to get resolved next year, because it's not. At this point, in our rainy day fund, there's $586. We're $7.2 million short of our 5 percentage goal. Free cash is at $3 million, and it's expected to drop at least another million before the end of the year. $11.5 million short of our 10% goal. Our school budget is being funded with a one-time funding source from the federal government of $3.1 million. That's got to be covered next year, and our cost is not going down. As Dr. Hackett said, we shouldn't be worried about this year. We should be worried about the next two years coming up. In addition to that, on the school budget, you know, typical 3% to 4% increase on contractual needs. We have to cover that as well next year. We raise our tax levy 2.5%. Punch the numbers in, they don't work. We're not funding OEPED again for the second year in a row. The only thing this is going to do is extend and increase our costs to get caught up. So all these things really need to be taken into consideration in a long-term plan developed well prior to budgets next year. I did vote yes on the budgets. And I did because there's really no other choice at this point with the budgets. There's nothing left to pick from. But until we start coming up with a long-term plan to resolve these, the next four to five years minimum are going to be very, very lean, mean with cuts until we can recover. Nicole, I did have one question for you. Could I ask a question to the council solicitor?
Chief, the staff solicitor, Tom? Go ahead. Counsel Connors.
Anyway, I drive her crazy. She's bringing her box. So can you just, so I know I asked some questions after we voted as we continue to scrub through and look at the numbers. And I did bring up some questions about the tax abatement credits that we give in the line item. And I know you came back with a response. But I do have just a couple of questions on it before we vote.
That is not the folder I would have brought just for the record.
Yeah, and they're not, they're not anything you cannot answer. It's more about process of how it works. So can you just provide a quick synopsis overview of what the, what the $1.2 million credit tax abatement is, just so people know, and what it involves, and how it works, and how it goes from the assessors' fund into the general fund? And when's the last time we did that? Just like an overview, just so I understand it a little bit better. And I think people, there's been some questions out there that I think people would benefit from the answers.
Certainly. So I'm actually going to do you one better than explaining it myself through the chair. I'm going to ask, I do believe that Bob Brinkman is still with us, and as is Director Spellman. And I think they are both probably much better suited to provide you and the public that's listening with a good explanation for that. Thank you very much.
Director Spellman and Mr. Brinkman, come on up, please.
To the President.
Good evening.
Thank you. And just remember, low level, like dummy it down for, for people like me. Thank you.
We set aside funds each year in the overlay to provide for abatements and exemptions for certain residents. In addition, we also provide funds for people who apply for abatements, for overvaluations, residential and also commercial. The abatements and exemptions generally would apply to elderly, veterans, and certain other exemptions. Those are generally granted and occur in that current fiscal year. The abatements for application for overvaluations, those are reviewed by the assessors. They can be granted in that year or in the following year. And then the taxpayers and the businesses have a right to appeal a negative decision on their behalf. And then that process would go to the state appellate tax board, so that that process could take several years to, to go through the full process, so that we don't, in one given fiscal year, have all of the abatements and exemptions processed through that account. What happens after several years, when all of the cases have been cleared or closed, funds become available in that overlay account. And you'll see that in this year's budget, we're using some overlay surplus from a prior year of $250,000. So those funds don't disappear. They're in that overlay reserve account. They're made available and released by the Board of Assessors. And then those funds are factored in as a revenue source in this fiscal year 22 budget.
And so on average, our, according to the documents I have anyways, we average anywhere from $500,000 to $600,000 in abatements. Is that correct? Or there was some confusion on the email that was sent back. It said remaining budget. But I really think it was actual abatements versus remaining budget in the 1.2. I know. Maybe just some clarification on that. At one point... I have the email. Do you want to look at it?
The numbers you were provided were the actual abatements granted.
Actual abatements.
Not the complete for those fiscal years specifically identified. So there are additional pending cases that are out there.
Okay. So it was, there was a little confusion on my part because it said remaining balances. And I thought, oh, is that remaining balances from the 1.2? So that makes sense. So in the, in the response that I got, there was a comment about due to this year, unique COVID instances, the debt exclusion, commercial values going down, residential taxes going up, and one other item that we are going to, we're expected to see a significant increase. Are we, are we expecting to see a 100% increase based on our actuals back to 2014? Is that what we're expecting?
We had discussed this when we first started the budget process. We had talked about the number and whether we should be using a higher number. And I think one of the council, the Ways and Means questions early on was, had we budgeted enough in the overlay account? And again, based on where we are today, we think that this is a, a good estimate. And it is just an estimate. A number of things can happen going forward, positive and negative. And we thought, in preparing this budget and this estimate, that the $1.2 million was the best available estimate we had today.
Okay. All right. That's all. Wait a minute. Let me just confirm before I send you away, Ed. How often do, so in the, again, one of the responses I got to the email that I had sent was, the assessors' office historically has taken, that you guys can, the assessors' office can vote to return any overlay surplus back to the general funds. Can you tell me how often they meet and how, when that's done? Because I couldn't find any record of it, or Counsel Sasha couldn't either.
Over the last three years, I believe the assessors have released overlay, and they've been included in the fiscal '22, '21, and '20 budget. I can get you that specific amount, and I can go back over the prior years, but I don't have that in my head. I'm sorry.
I don't need the numbers. Just the, when do they meet? And is it a public hearing, I assume? It is. I saw you nod yes. I'm okay with that.
Good evening. Yes, so all of our meetings are public meetings. That would require a vote by the Board of Assessors to release any overlay. And then we would forward that information to Ed and Marklin.
And the funds typically, so in the case of, let's say, fiscal year '18, the, the numbers were like $550,000. Just for round numbers, that's not the actual number. I didn't look it up right now. But so we had put apart, put aside $1.17 million for the overlay account. What happened to the difference in that account? Did it all go back into the general fund? Like, is that typically what happens? I wouldn't say specifically that.
Once, once we get to that finish line, there is still pending cases for FY '18. There's also uncollectibles that could be part of the overlay as well. So it, it literally changes, you know, almost on a day-to-day basis, that balance. So, you know, we do take a conservative approach because we, we don't want to face an overlay deficit, where we have to come to this, the council, and ask for some money, which, which would be a problem. So the reverse is generally true. We'll, we'll forecast as best we can. It's difficult. This is, I've been doing this for 25 years. Fiscal '22 is, is, is the most unique year, I think, that we're all facing. So I think a conservative approach is, is needed. But, but certainly, once we get through this, on an annual basis, we, we review what we can release. You know, Ed, Ed is as diligent as, as the council in the sense that any, any amount that can be released, he'll come to the board and myself and ask, ask if we can take a look at it.
Okay. So I just want to confirm. So in our eyes, taking out a couple hundred thousand to maybe help with the job loss issue or, not that I have any control over that. I do not. The mayor decides where it goes. We, obviously, the town council can decrease, but we cannot appropriate. So in, in your opinion, or in your value, you've been here a long time doing this, you really think we're going to utilize most of that $1.2 million this year? Or within the next three or four years, whenever everything gets settled?
Yeah, I think, once we get through fiscal '22, it's, it's a difficult challenge for all of us. Again, once we get through that, we'll, I think we'll have a better opportunity to review it for fiscal '23. You know, if we've, if our approach is deemed effective, then I don't think we'll change course. But I think, again, one of the things that, that is in the '21 and '22 overlay is the 20% increase on... is in the 21 and 22 overlay is the 20% increase on exemptions. So, you know, we forecast that 20%, but we don't know whether we'll have more, more filings or more appeals and so forth. So it's, it's a very, very difficult thing to forecast. So we've got to prepare for the worst and hope for the best. Any, the best-case scenario is we're releasing overlay surplus to the general fund.
That helped. I didn't realize, I forgot about the 20% increase. So thank you. That helped. That was just, that's a bell that goes off in your head. Yes, we did increase 20%. So it is going to have a effect. Okay. All right. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Okay. Counselor Sasha, you are next. Director Spellman and Mr. Brinkman, can you come back up, please?
I did want to follow up on that same question because I was also a little confused by the response that we got to it. So first of all, I, there are no meetings posted on the town website for the Board of Assessors. None at all. So I don't know if that is just a technical glitch. And I think that's part of what was throwing me off, because now I'm understanding that on a regular basis, that money is coming back to the general fund, which was not clear. So I'm just, can you, can you walk us through the numbers one more time? Just the difference between the 1.2 million and the 550,000 that we're seeing. It was termed as current fund balance for each year. So is the case that 550,000 roughly is spent in that year, and then more of that 1.2 million could be spent in following years as things are closed out? Just because based on those numbers, you'd think there would be a surplus of almost a half a million dollars every year. And it's clearly not the case.
The 1.2 million is the original amount that we've put into the overlay. And based on those current balances, there's been approximately 700,000 granted in abatements and exemptions, and then also various overvaluation exemptions. So the 500,000 is the current balance in the accounts. And there are pending cases before the appellate tax board for overvaluation. So there may be additional abatements granted in each of the current three, three current fiscal years. Is that what's going on?
Okay. So, so those numbers we were given were a current balance for each year?
The current balance, correct.
And so it actually appears that 1.2 million is not necessarily enough, because it was going down every year, just slightly. The numbers were decreasing year over year, just by a little bit. But that then implies that if we're allocating 1.2 million every year, it's not quite enough?
Again, we haven't had a year where, once all the cases are cleared, we've had a deficit. We've been able to release some funds, overlay reserve funds, to be used for future budgets. So that, as you said, the numbers are going down of the current available balance. And that's based on the original amount.
Okay. I think I got it. All right. Thank you.
Thank you both. Any other counselor? We'll go to the public and then back. Seeing none. Okay, we do have a question on Zoom. I believe this is for Mayor Kokoros, or the Chief of Staff. We are aware of Zoom issues. We're getting some feedback, so I apologize that. We're going to reevaluate this Zoom in the future. So this question comes from Joan Marie Cruz. If the state provides any additional funding, will that be applied to this year's budget? And will it be able to go to the school budget to save any positions this year? Mayor Kokoros?
Madam President, if we receive any additional funding, we will definitely assess through the school committee and Superintendent Lee at the time, I'm sure, will be in charge. And we will, we'll assess what the needs are, and if there are needs, we will definitely address them. And I think that wherever those needs are, is where they will be placed. And we certainly will review if there are any needs within the school department, if we do receive additional funding.
Thank you. Anybody in attendance wish to speak? Come on up to the mic. Seeing none. Any other from the public on Zoom, if you have questions? Clerk Simino, any questions you want to read into the record? No questions. Okay. We do have Counselor O'Brien, who is with us via Zoom, and the audio is not working. So his votes, Clerk Simino will relay his votes to us when appropriate. Okay. That is it. Any counsel wish to speak? Counsel Flaherty, go ahead.
If you had asked me a couple of years ago whether I would support this budget, I would have said no way, because you're cutting teachers, and that will not happen on my watch. Because there, I would have argued that there has to be another way. And, and that was my attitude when I began reviewing this budget. I combed through every single line, looking for how those jobs could be saved. And the jobs in the other departments too, but especially, especially the teachers. Because I knew, I know that the case that parents and teachers have built has merit. I don't ever want to cut school staff, but cutting them now, when we know our kids are going to go back to school in the fall, with deficits in their learning because of the impact of COVID, the need for our teachers is stronger than ever. And that's, that's just the truth. So, so I scoured the budget. And I can tell you, so did every single member of the Ways and Means Committee. We dragged department heads through every line of their budgets, asking questions about all of it. And through it all, there were a couple of things that became overwhelmingly clear. One is that our money is largely bound up in contractually obligated spending that can't be reallocated. We can't not pay our debts. We can't not pay the people who work for us. We can't ditch retirement benefits. The state is going to get its money on assessments. And we have to have elections. And I'm not even trying to tell you that it shouldn't be that way, because I believe in all those things. But stuff like that accounts for 87% of our budget that we can't touch at all. And the remaining 13% is what we spend on literally everything else. And half that sum, more than half really, is already going to the schools. So there's not a lot to work with. The other thing that became clear is that the cost of everything goes up every year, but our revenues don't go up every year. They're flat. So to make up the difference, we've been dipping into our free cash to make ends meet. Residents have called on our local government to recognize that this is our rainy day. And what I want people to understand is that no one disputes that. The problem is that it has been more than raining, it's been monsooning for more than a year. We used $2.33 million of our rainy day funds to keep from making cuts last year. But revenues were too low for those funds to be replenished, and now they're depleted. So when we look at the budget now, the money's just not there. This administration has been a careful steward of the resources that we have. We can't spend money that we don't have. And the revenue losses we took over the course of this year were real. This budget represents a good faith effort to try to minimize the impact of those losses on our schools and everywhere in this town. And that's why I'm going to support it.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Anybody else? Seeing none. I know last meeting, I read what the council is responsible for. According to the town charter, I won't read all of that again, but just to reiterate, it's the council's role to review the budget as presented by the mayor. We only have the authority to make recommendations to decrease the budget. We cannot increase the budget. And if we do make decreases, as was stated in previous conversations, we cannot say what program should be cut or how it should be cut. And I cannot thank the Ways and Means enough for all their hard work by, led by Counsel Berica, Counsel Connors, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Sasha, serving the Ways and Means. This was probably one of the most difficult Ways and Means that I can remember. They did go through it in more depth than I have ever seen. I served myself on the Ways and Means for six years. And this was the most difficult year. Their questions were, there were a lot of them, going back and forth through all of them, to all the department heads. And I know they didn't make it easy on all the department heads. So I appreciate all the hard work, the thoughtful questions, the thorough review, and looking out for the residents in the best interest of the town. With that, Counsel Connors?
Ryan, who's on the Ways and Means?
Oh, jeez, I'm sorry. There's five. You're right. And Counsel Ryan. How could I forget? Sorry. I'm so used to four. All right. Anybody else wish to speak? Okay. We do have a motion before we close.
Actually, no motion.
Not a motion, correct.
A non-motion. So at this point, I'm going to read into the record the Town of Braintree FY 2022 budget, according to Department of Programs, the revised amounts, and I will note any changes. With that said, as to town council programs, the FY 2022 revised amount is $273,714. There's no change or revision. As to mayor's office programs, the FY 2022 revised number is $479,204. That's no change. As to our finance programs, the revised number is $13,572,318. That is a change of $377,500. As to our law item, the revised amount is 170, I mean, the revised amount is $172,543, which is no change. As to our human resources programs, the revised budget number is $22,942,166. No change there. As to the town clerk, the revised number is $442,747, a downward change of $4,750. As to the planning and community development, the revised number is $556,809, but that is with no change. As to the police, $11,396,169. That is an addition of $4,750 over the original amount. As to the fire department, our revised number is $9,659,993. No change. As to municipal licenses and inspections, the amount is $968,944. That amounts to no change. As to education, the revised 2022 number is $71,947,500. That is a positive change of $377,500. As to Blue Hills Regional, the revised number is $2,582,753, which is no change. As to the Public Works Department, the revised number is $8,736,977, which is no change. As to Elder Affairs, the revised number is $325,688, which is no change. As to the Library Department, it is $1,559,691, which is no change. For total general fund, revised 2022 number of $145,617,216. Moving on to our golf department, the revised number is $1,708,653, which is a downward revision of $291,792. As to the sewer department, the revised number is $11,604,485. As to our water department, the revised 2022 number is $10,011,413. As to our stormwater, it is a revised number of $1,074,266. As to cable access PEG, the revised amount is $505,0099. As to sewer water, stormwater, and cable access, there was no change in those budgets. Our FY 2022 revised total all funds is $170,521, I'm sorry, $170,521,132 for a downward trend of $291,792.
Thank you, Counsel Ringus. Now, if we can continue with the motion to close the public hearing.
Madam President, I would move to close the public hearing.
There's been a motion made by Counsel Ringus to close the public hearing, seconded by Counsel Ryan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Now Counsel Ringus, motions, please.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move that, first, that the Town of Braintree raise and appropriate the sum of $145,617,216, provide for all of the expenses for the maintenance and operation of the town's several departments and programs for the fiscal year 2022, and that the several sums herein set forth are hereby approved for the several purposes and are subject to the source of funding for set expenditures as outlined on the attached Exhibit A, specifically that the sum of $93,499 be transferred from golf course receipts, the sum of $250,000 be transferred from the overlay surplus account, the sum of $9,700 be transferred from the waterways improvement fund, the sum of $22,000 be transferred from the sale of the cemetery lots, the sum of $857,250 be transferred from water and sewer receipts, the sum of $36,251 be transferred from stormwater receipts, the sum of $1,864,500 to be transferred from the American Rescue Plan Act account, and the balance to be raised in the tax levy, including $2,659,954 from the debt exclusion.
There's been a motion made by Counsel Ringus, seconded by Counsel Ryan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Counsel O'Brien votes no. That's eight in favor, one nay.
Madam President, moving to next, that the Town of Braintree appropriate the sum of $1,708,653 to provide for all of the expenses for the maintenance and operation of the town's golf course and related programs for the fiscal year 2022, and that the several sums herein set forth are hereby approved for the several purposes as outlined on the attached Exhibit A specifically, and that the sum of $1,708,653 be raised in the golf course receipts.
There's been a motion made by Counsel Ringus, seconded by Counsel Ryan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Counsel, that's nine, two. That is unanimous. Thank you. Counsel Ringus?
As to third, that the Town of Braintree appropriate the sum of $21,615,898 to provide for all of the expenses for the maintenance and operation of the town's water and sewer division and related programs for the fiscal year 2022, and that the several sums herein set forth are hereby approved for the several purposes as outlined on the attached Exhibit A, specifically that the sum of $103,694 be transferred from the water sewer rehabilitation fund, and the balance of $21,512,204 be raised in the water and sewer receipts.
There's been a motion made by Counsel Ringus, seconded by Counsel Ryan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you. Counsel Ringus?
That the Town of Braintree appropriate the sum of $1,074,266 to provide for all of the expenses for the maintenance and operation of the town's stormwater division and related programs for the fiscal year 2022, and that the several sums herein set forth are hereby approved for the several purposes as outlined on the attached Exhibit A specifically, and that the sum of $1,074,266 be raised in the stormwater receipts.
There's been a motion made by Counsel Ringus, seconded by Counsel Ryan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you. Counsel Ringus?
Madam President, that the Town of Braintree appropriate the sum of $505,99 to provide for all of the expenses for the maintenance and operation of the town's cable, television, public, education, and government access and related programs for the fiscal year 2022, and that the several sums herein set forth are hereby approved for the several purposes as outlined on the attached Exhibit A specifically, and that the sum of $505,099 be raised in the cable franchise fees receipts.
There's been a motion made by Counsel Ringus, seconded by Counsel Ryan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you. Counsel Ringus?
Madam President, I move pursuant to chapter, General Law, Chapter 44, Section 31D, the town is authorized to incur a liability in excess of the amount appropriated for snow and ice for the fiscal year 2022.
And a motion made by Counsel Ringus, seconded by Counsel Ryan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous, 9-0. Thank you. Moving on. Congratulations, Mayor. Moving on, congratulations, Mayor. Moved, approved that part of the budget. Moving on to Item 21021, the mayor, the FY 2022 budget, Community Preservation Committee, or take up any action relative thereto? This is a public hearing, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved, Madam President.
Second. There's been a motion to open the public hearing by Councilor Ringus, seconded by Councilor Ryan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, I will just restate, we, if we are not having technical issues on Zoom, we will open that up, but the chat feature is available. If you are watching via YouTube, you can text 339-987-2726 for any questions for this part of the public hearing. I will refer to Councilor Barica, who is the Chairwoman of the Committee on Ways and Means, for the Ways and Means recommendation to the full council. Councilor Barica?
Thank you, President Hume. The Ways and Means Committee sends this to the full council with a favorable unanimous recommendation, and look forward to the discussion.
Anyone from the mayor's office wish to speak on this? Nope. Any counselor, questions, comments on this? Seeing none. Anybody from the public here in attendance? None? Anybody on Zoom? No. Clerk Samino, any questions? Okay.
Madam President, I'd move to close the public hearing.
Second. There's been a motion by Councilor Ringus, seconded by Councilor Ryan, to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That is unanimous. Councilor Ringus?
Madam President, I would move that in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44B, Section 5, and the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee that the sum of $150,000 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Fund to the Community Housing Reserve for Acquisition, Creation, Preservation, or Support of Community Housing or the Rehabilitation or Restoration of Community Housing that is acquired or created as provided in Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, Section 5.
Second. There's been a motion made by Councilor Ringus, seconded by Councilor Ryan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Councilor O'Brien votes yes.
That is unanimous, nine to zero. Councilor Ringus?
Madam President, I would move that in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section, 44B, Section 5, and the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee that the sum of $150,000 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Fund to the Open Space Reserve for the Acquisition, Creation, or Preservation of Open Space or the Rehabilitation or Restoration of Open Space that is acquired or created as provided in Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44B, Section 5.
Second. There's been a motion made by Councilor Ringus, seconded by Councilor Ryan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Councilor O'Brien votes yes.
That is unanimous, thank you. Councilor Ringus?
Madam President, I would move that in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44B, Section 5, and the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee that the sum of $150,000 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Fund to the Historic Resources Reserve for the Acquisition, Preservation, Rehabilitation, or Restoration of Historic Resources as provided in Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44B, Section 5.
Second. There's been a motion made by Councilor Ringus, seconded by Councilor Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Councilor O'Brien votes yes.
That is unanimous, nine to zero.
Madam President, I would move in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44B, Section 5, and the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee that the sum of $427,595 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Fund to the Community Preservation Budget Reserve as provided in Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44B, Section 5.
Second. There's been a motion made by Councilor Ringus, seconded by Councilor Ryan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Councilor O'Brien votes yes.
That is unanimous, nine to zero. Thank you, Councilor Ringus.
Madam President, I would move in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44B, Section 5, and the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee that the sum of $46,189 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Fund to the Fiscal Year 2022 Administrative Operating Fund as provided in Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44B, Section 5, said funds to be expended under the direction of Community Preservation Committee and by the Director of Community and Planning Development.
Second. There's been a motion made by Councilor Ringus, seconded by Councilor Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Councilor O'Brien votes yes.
That is unanimous, nine to zero. And that wraps that up. Moving on to Item 21022, the mayor, the FY 2022 budget, continuation of revolving funds or take up any action relative thereto? This is also a public hearing, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved, Madam President.
Second. There's been a motion made by Councilor Ringus, seconded by Councilor Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, thank you. And I will refer to Councilor Barica, who is the Chairwoman of Ways and Means, for your recommendation to the full council.
Thank you, President Hume. This too, and I should have said it last time, both the revolving funds and the Community Preservation Budget was part of our budgetary hearing, so we are also sending this to the full council for a full, with a unanimous favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Anyone from the mayor's office wish to speak on this? Seeing none. Any counselor? No? Councilor Ryan?
Thank you. Madam President, I just want to take a minute to say I did serve on the Ways and Means Committee, and as a member of the committee, serving with four new counselors, I was just very proud of the work that my fellow counselors did. And I think when we talked a couple of years ago, you said, Charlie, I want you to be on the Ways and Means, and we have some new counselors, and make sure everybody knows what they're doing. And let me tell you, they did a great job, and I didn't show them anything. They showed me how to really look at a budget and pay attention and ask the tough questions. I didn't come up with one question that they already didn't think of, and they really did their homework. And if you want to have a fun May, join the Ways and Means Committee and go to nine nights of Ways and Means Committee meetings, 20 hours, and it makes for a very long May. And I was just very impressed with all my fellow counselors and the jobs that they did, and I want to say, well done, and I was proud to serve with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Ryan. As a Ways and Means member, I appreciate your work. Anybody from the public here wish to speak? And on Zoom, I don't see any questions via Zoom. Counselor, Clerk Samino, anybody questions? Double check.
No questions.
No questions, okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, Madam President.
Second. There's been a motion made by Councilor Ringus, seconded by Councilor Ryan, to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No opposed.
Okay, that is unanimous, thank you, nine to zero. Councilor Ringus, a motion, please.
Madam President, I'd move for the motion for continuation of revolving funds, that in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half of the General Laws, the Town of Braintree hereby setting the maximum amount that may be spent during fiscal year 2022, beginning on July 1, 2021, for the revolving funds established by ordinance for certain departments, boards, committees, agencies, or officers as follows: that the Elder Affairs Service and Activities Revolving Fund, which falls under the Department of Elder Affairs, will have an FY 2022 spending limit of $30,000; that immunization, which falls under the Board of Health, will have a spending limit of $50,000; the library materials, which falls under library trustees, will have a spending limit of $45,000; the library room rental, falling under the library trustees, will have a spending limit of $5,000; the recycling materials, falling under mayor in conjunction with the recycling coordinator, will have a spending limit of $2,000; that household hazardous waste, which falls under the mayor's office in conjunction with the recycling coordinator, will have a spending limit of $50,000; the full-day kindergarten, which falls under the purview of the school committee, will have a spending limit of $925,000; that the pro shop, which falls under the office of the mayor in conjunction with the Director of Golf Operations, will have a spending limit of $200,000; and that food and beverage, which falls under the mayor in conjunction with the Director of Golf Operations, will have a spending limit of $450,000.
Second. There's been a motion made by Councilor Ringus, seconded by Councilor Ryan. All in favor?
Question? Question?
Councilor Ringus?
So, under, Councilor Ryan, full-day kindergarten, was it $910,000 or $925,000?
$925. I have $925.
I have $925, but I also have $910.
Director Spellman, can you just confirm that figure for us? Is it $925,000 or $910,000? Director Spellman's confirmed, it's $925,000. Thank you, Councilor.
It was right into the record, it's $925,000.
Yep, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Councilor O'Brien votes yes.
Count, that is unanimous, thank you, nine to zero. Okay, moving on, Item 21023 has been tabled to a future meeting. Item 21024, Superintendent of Schools MSBA Statement of Interest Accelerator Repair Project, or take up any action relative thereto? I will refer to Councilor Barica, the Chairwoman of the Committee on Ways and Means, for your recommendation from the committee.
Thank you very much, President Hume.
Hold on, sorry.
Apologies.
21023, can we just table that? Have a vote? 21023, oh, to vote to table it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, sorry. Okay, we're going to take a procedural step back, my apologies. So, Item 21023, Superintendent of Schools MSBA Statement of Interest Core Project Braintree High School, or take up any action relative thereto? Can we get a motion to table this?
So moved, Madam President.
Second. There's been a motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Councilor O'Brien votes yes.
That is unanimous, nine to zero, thank you. Thank you, Clerk Samino. Councilor Barica?
Thank you.
Refer back to you.
Yep, thank you, President Hume. So, residents know the Mass. School Building Authority requires local government approval for the superintendent to submit statements of interest. So the statement of interest we're talking about this evening is for accelerated repair projects to our elementary schools. This is, it's non-binding, it's non-monetary, it does not commit the town to apply for projects. It's, it's really a procedural step. So the Ways and Means Committee reviewed this last week, and we are sending this to the council with a unanimous favorable recommendation.
Anyone from the mayor's office wish to speak on this?
Madam President?
May I, of course?
In regards to the rapid roof repair, we have two that are in the pipeline right now, Liberty and Highlands, and having been a Highlands parent, it's long overdue. So the funding source for these roofs are, is coming from the debt exclusion. So we are looking to maximize our ability to get funding through the MSBA. So we've had luck so far with the first two, and we're hoping that we get approval on these as well. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Superintendent Hackett, wish to speak? Okay. Anybody from the, any counsel wish to speak on this? Seeing none. Okay.
Madam President?
Councilor Ringus?
I would move that upon the request of the Superintendent of the Braintree Schools, the Town of Braintree, through the Braintree Town Council, resolves, having convened in an open meeting on June 1, 2021, prior to the closing date, the Town Council of Braintree, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the Superintendent of the Braintree Public School Department to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority Statement of Interest dated June 1, 2021, for Flaherty Elementary School at 99 Lakeside Drive in Braintree, Mass., Hollis Elementary School, 482 Washington Street, Braintree, Mass., Morrison Elementary School, 260 Liberty Street, Braintree, Mass., and Matic, 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 Matic Quint kindergarten, I don't know why I couldn't say that, 25 Brow Ave, Braintree, Mass., which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future for the repair and/or replacement of roofs as described in Priority Number Five of the Statement of Interest, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this Statement of Interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the Braintree Public School District to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second. There's been a motion made by Councilor Ringus, seconded by Councilor Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Councilor O'Brien votes present.
That is eight yes, one present. Thank you. Moving on to Item 21026, Mayor, Supplemental Appropriation Number Three, or take up any action relative thereto? This is a public hearing, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved, Madam President.
Second. There's been a motion made by Councilor Ringus, seconded by Councilor Ryan, to open the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No opposed.
That is unanimous, and again, I will refer to Chairwoman Council Barica for the Committee of Ways and Means recommendation to the full council.
Thank you very much, President Hume. The Ways and Means Committee is sending this request for appropriation to the full council with a unanimous favorable recommendation, and given the very limited amount of money we have in our free cash reserves, as we previously discussed this evening, I want to commend all the department heads who have, I can't even imagine how long it took, combed through their budgets, thank you, to find every last nickel and penny to ensure we are using the absolute bare minimum of free cash to fund this appropriation. For residents who might be watching or on our Zoom this evening, all of the financial transfers are in the public record. If you, if you want to go through them, they're multiple pages long, you can see where the money was moved from and to. So sending this to the council with a full, with a favorable recommendation, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody from the mayor's office wish to, wish to speak on this? Mayor Kokoros?
Counselors, if you look at the total, starting over $800,000, and the amount of work that went in, I just want to commend my staff for bringing the number down to 100,000, 105,000, and you'll see later in the agenda that, you know, we're basically going to be transferring more than that back into the general fund, so from another resource. But I can't say enough for the work and effort that was put in to these transfers, and, you know, we're going to continue to keep working on reducing and properly funding our overtime expenses so that the supplements will get lower and lower, and hopefully eventually we won't be asking for supplements. But I just wanted to make note of the, the effort that has been put in, and you'll see by the number of motions that have to be read, sorry about that, but this is truly great work, once again, by my staff, and I ask for your favorable action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Kokoros. Any counselor wish to speak on this? Seeing none. Anybody from the public here in attendance? Seeing none. Anybody on Zoom? Nope. Clerk Samino? No questions. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, Madam President.
Second. There's been a motion made by Councilor Ringus, seconded by Councilor Ryan, to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No opposed.
That is unanimous. Councilor Ringus, for all the motions.
These are my favorites, I love these ones. All right. General Fund's motions. Police Department, motion that the sum of $151,522.64 be transferred from State Assessments, State Assessment Program 820 Charter School Spending Account. $41,227.20 be transferred from Municipal License and Inspections, Health Program 07, Public Health Nurse Account. $1,000 be transferred from Finance, Treasury Program 10, Office Supply Account. $2,000 be transferred from Finance, Treasury 10, Meeting Account. $27,090.98 be transferred from Finance, General Insurance Program 09, Insurance Deductible Account. $300 be transferred from Planning and Community Development, Economic Development Program 07, Legal Ad Account. $400 be transferred from Planning and Community Development, Economic Development Program 07, Dues Account. $750 be transferred from Community Planning and Development Fair Housing Program 08, Awards Account. $275 be transferred from Planning and Community Development Fair Housing Program 08, Consultant Account. $75 be transferred from Planning and Community Development Fair Program 08, Postage Account. $100 be transferred from Planning and Community Development Fair Housing Program 08, Printing Account. $200 be transferred from Planning and Community Development Fair Housing Program 08, Committee Expense Account. $130 be transferred from Planning and Community Development Historic Commission Program 09, Postage Account. $200 be transferred from Planning and Community Development Historic Commission Program 09, Dues Account. $200 be transferred from Library Current Topics Program 05, Overtime Account. $13,900 be transferred from Library Current Topics Program 05, Shift Differential Account. $3,500 be transferred from Library Current Topics Program 05, Extra Hours Account. $200 be transferred from Library Lifelong Learning Program 06, Extra Hours Account. $1,000 be transferred from Library Lifelong Learning Program 06, Shift Differential Account. Differential Account. $1,234 be transferred from Library Community Commons Program 07 Copier Rental Account. $600 be transferred from Library Community Commons Program 07 Dues Membership Account. $1,500 be transferred to Department of Elder Affairs Equipment Maintenance Program 02 Motor Vehicle Repairs Account. $500 be transferred from Department of Elder Affairs Equipment Maintenance Program 02 Gasoline Account. $700 be transferred from DPW Administration Program 01 Office Supplies Account. $500 be transferred from DPW Administration Program 01 Meeting Account. $600 be transferred from DPW Administration Program 01 Dues Account. $25,000 be transferred from DPW Environmental Affairs Program 12 Refuge Account. $52,438.49 be transferred from DPW Parking Recreation Program 15 Department Head Account. $2,500 be transferred from DPW Parking Recreation Program 15 Office Supplies Account. $7,733.69 be transferred from DPW Summer Programs Program 20 Summer Programs Account, for a total of $337,377 be transferred to the Police Department Overtime Accounts, and further, the Director of Municipal Finance be authorized to allocate said sums to and among the various line items affected thereby.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Counsel Ryan. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Council Brian votes present.
That is eight in favor, one present. Counsel Ringus, next motion, please.
As to the Police Department, that the sum of $15,000 be transferred from Police Administration Program 01 Data Processing Account. $1,000 be transferred from Police Administration Program 01 Postage Account. $900 be transferred from Police Administration Program 01 Out-of-State Travel Account. $3,000 be transferred from Police Administration Program 01 Investigation Funds Account. $3,000 be transferred from Police Building Maintenance Program 02 Lighting Account. $5,000 be transferred from Police Equipment Maintenance Program 03 Gasoline Account. $3,200 be transferred from Police Animal Control Program 10 Part-Time Employee Account. $1,000 be transferred from Police Animal Control Program 10 Animal Disposal Account. $200 be transferred from Police Animal Control Program 10 Veterinary Services Account, for a total of $32,300 be transferred to the Police Department Detective Overtime Account, and further, the Director of Municipal Finance be authorized to allocate said sums to and among the various line items affected.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Council Ryan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Council Brian votes present.
That is eight in favor, one present. Counsel Ringus.
As to the Police Department, that the sum of $61,000 be transferred from the Police Department Patrol Bureau Program 04 Sworn Personnel Account to the Police Department Police Detective Program 06 Detective Stipend Account.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Council Ryan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Council Brian votes present.
That is eight in favor, one present. Counsel Ringus.
As to the Police Department, that the sum of $6,000 be transferred from the Police Department Patrol Bureau Program 04 Sworn Personnel Account to the Police Department Police Special Services Program 08 Crossing Guards Account.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Council Ryan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Council Brian votes present.
That is eight in favor, one present. Counsel Ringus.
Madam President, as to the Fire Department, I would move that the sum of $10,000 be transferred from the Fire Equipment Maintenance Program 03 Outside Motor Vehicle Repairs Account. $2,000 be transferred from the Fire Equipment Maintenance Program 03 Diesel Fuel Account. $27,266.31 be transferred for the DPW Summer Programs Program 20 Summer Programs Account. $32,441 be transferred from Municipal License and Inspections Administration Program 01 Department Head Account. $35,702 be transferred from Municipal License and Inspections Administration Program 01 Admin Clerical Account. $1,600 be transferred from Municipal License and Inspections Administration Program 01 Meetings and Seminars Accounts. $700 be transferred from Municipal License and Inspections Administration Program 01 Dues and Memberships Account. $3,500 be transferred from Municipal License and Inspections Inspections Code Enforcement Program 05 Mileage Account. $1,200 be transferred from Municipal License and Inspections Substance Use Prevention Program 06 Printing Account. $750 be transferred from Municipal Licenses and Inspections Substance Use Prevention Program 06 Office Supplies Account. $500 be transferred from Municipal License and Inspections Substance Use Prevention Program 06 Office Supplies Account. $12,580 be transferred from Municipal License and Inspections Health Program 07 Inspector Account. $1,000 be transferred from Municipal License and Inspections Health Program 07 Mileage Account. $1,500 be transferred from Town Council Administration Program 01 Dues and Membership Account. $15,253 be transferred from Town Council Reserve Fund Program 02 Reserve Fund Account, and $105,752.97 be transferred from the fiscal year 2020 Certified Free Cash, for a total of $251,745.28, to be transferred to the Fire Department Overtime Accounts, and further, that the Director of Municipal Finance be authorized to allocate said sums to and among the various line items affected thereby.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Council Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Council Brian votes present.
That is eight in favor, one present. Counsel Ringus.
Uh, Madam President, as to the Fire Department, I would move that the sum of $11,958.98 be transferred from the Finance IT Program 08 Muni's Account. $13,000 from the Finance IT Program Connect CT Account. $2,000 be transferred from Finance IT Program 08 Office Account. $18,419.2 from the Finance General Insurance Program 09 Insurance Deductible Account, for a total of $45,378, to be transferred to Fire Fire Suppression Program 04 Working Out of Grade Account.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Council Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Council Brian votes present.
That is eight in favor, one present. Counsel Ringus.
Madam President, as to Human Resources, I would move that the sum of $5,797.2 be transferred from Finance IT Program 08 Muni's Account. $15,000 be transferred from Human Resources Employee Benefit Program 04 Workers' Comp Public Safety Account. $20,000 be transferred from Human Resources Veterans Benefit Program 06 Veterans Benefit Account, for a total of $40,797.2 to be transferred to the Human Resource Administration Program 01 Vacation Buyback Account.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Council Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Council Brian votes present.
That is eight in favor, one present. Counsel Ringus.
As to the Finance Department, I would move that the sum of $10,000 be transferred from Finance Accounting Program 04 Copier Rental Account, to be transferred to the Finance Treasurer Program 10 Recordings and Takings Account.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Council Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Council Brian votes present.
That is eight in favor, one present. Counsel Ringus.
As to the Finance, I would move that the sum of $2,500 be transferred from Finance Administration Program 01 Staff Development Account. $213 be transferred from Finance Administration Program 01 Printing Account. $500 be transferred from Finance Administration Program 01 Meeting Account. $200 be transferred from Finance Administration Program 01 Mileage Account. $1,065 be transferred from Finance Administration Program 01 Dues and Membership Meeting Account. $5,000 from Finance Accounting Program 04 Copier Rental Account. $522 be transferred from Finance Accounting Program 04 Copier Supplies Account, for a total of $10,000 to be transferred to the Finance Treasurer Program 10 Tax Titles Account.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Council Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Council Brian votes present.
That is eight in favor, one present. Counsel Ringus.
As to Finance, I would move that the sum of $978 be transferred from Finance Accounting Program 04 Copier Supplies Account. $1,000 be transferred from Finance Accounting 04 Meeting Account. $120 be transferred from Finance Accounting Program 04 Dues Account. $7,244 be transferred from Finance IT 08 Muni's Line Account, for a total of $9,342 to be transferred to the Finance BSBA Interest on Debt Program 53 Bond Anticipation Note Interest Account.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Council Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Council Brian votes present.
That is eight in favor, one present. Counsel Ringus, two more to go.
As to Golf, I would move that the sum of $4,100 be transferred from Golf Food Service Program 07 Food Supplies Account, to be transferred to the Golf Principal on Debt Program 50 Principal Debt Account.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Council Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Council Brian votes present.
That is eight in favor, one present. Counsel Ringus, the final one.
I would move that the sum of $85 be transferred from Golf Food Service Program 07 Food Supplies Account, to be transferred to the Golf Interest on Debt Program 51 Interest on Debt Account.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Counsel Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Council Brian votes present.
That is eight in favor, one present. Thank you, Counsel Ringus, for, uh, reading all of those motions. Appreciate that. Moving on to item 2-1-028, Mayor, ordinance to establish anti-blite program or take up any action related thereto. This is a public hearing that we're hoping to continue to June 15th. Uh, but is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Counsel Ryan, to open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No opposed.
That is unanimous. Is there a motion to continue this public hearing for Order 2-1-028 to our June 15th, 2021 Town Council meeting?
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Counsel Ringus, seconded by Counsel Ryan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Council Brian votes yes.
That is nine in favor. That is unanimous. Thank you all. Okay, moving on to new business. There is none. Uh, is there a motion to refer the following to the committee? Counsel Ringus.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I would refer to the Committee of Ways and, or move to refer to the Committee of Ways and Means, 2-1-034, Mayor, transfer of funds from land sale account to general fund, or take up any action relative thereto.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Counsel Ringus, seconded by Counsel Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Council Brian votes yes.
That is unanimous, nine to zero. Thank you all. And we made it through our annual town meeting. Uh, our next meeting will be on Tuesday, June 15th, at 7:30 PM. I just want to thank again all of you here in attendance tonight, the mayor's office, all the department heads, the employees. We made it through. Let's hope, um, our year's already looking better, and let's hope next year is better, and, uh, it's in our rearview mirror. But special thank you to B-CAM we have with us tonight, Wes Ray, I believe Bill Needham, and Jerry McConach are here. While, uh, we were not having meetings, they upgraded all the cameras here in Town Hall. There's more cameras than there were before, uh, much better quality, so hopefully the people viewing at home will have a, uh, better view of us. So, thank you, B-CAM, for always, uh, making our meetings available to the residents at home, um, in so many ways. Uh, we are going to reevaluate the whole Zoom thing while we're here in, um, while we're back in live person meetings, 'cause as all of you know, tonight, we did have a lot of technical difficulties and feedback, and it's to no fault of B-CAM. Believe me when I say they've spent hours, they've spent hours here with Sue Semino, the clerk of the council, doing the best job they possibly can to have it accessible, and have so many means for the public to view our meetings here at home, on their YouTube channel, their live streaming, and on Zoom. So I appreciate the, all the efforts, but if we can't get this to work, um, the best with the, um, audio working 100%, we're probably going to, um, not use this moving forward, but stay tuned. But just to give everybody a heads up, um, we did see on the chat, there was people having issues, and we do appreciate that. Uh, but Sue, thank you to getting us all back here in public, and as I, was mentioned earlier, all the many subcommittee meetings, Sue was there for all of them, not just Ways and Means, but every subcommittee we have in full committee, and keeping us all updated, uh, as she is our full-time staff, and keeping us all informed. So thank you for everything. Uh, with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Counsel Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Council Brian votes yes.
That is unanimous. Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
President.